We have three and a half days of fun and frolic at the Sheraton Harbor Island. We'll see how that goes. A lot of interesting items today, and of course, I want to ready for item four, the Marina Apartment Homes, project number 526167.
Good morning Chairman Haas and Planning Commissioners. I'm Paul Godwin, Development Project Manager for the Marina Apartment Homes Project. The 5.73 acre site is located at 1579 to 1645 Marina Boulevard. The proposed project would remove an existing recreational vehicle park and construct 150 market-rate multifamily condominium units. The project requires approval of a vesting tentative map, site development permit, plan development permit, rezone, and amendments to the municipal code, local coastal program, general plan, and community plan. These actions require a process five approval with the recommendation from the Planning Commission. The project is located in the Claremont Mesa Community Plan, which designates the site for mobile home, low-density residential, and general commercial uses. The site is zoned RS17, which allows single-family development, and CC42, which allows commercial development. Site is also located in the airport influence review area, FAA Part 77, Claremont Mesa overlay, height overlay zone, FEMA flood zone, mobile home overlay zone, and transit priority area. On June 19th, 2018, the Claremont Mesa Community Planning Group voted 11 to 1 to 1 to recommend approval of the project with conditions regarding tree selection, building arch design, and colors which the applicant has agreed to provide. Site is located in a developed urban neighborhood on the east side of Marina Boulevard, Interstate 5, north of Teca Lotte Road, with Tonopah Avenue to the northeast and Frankfurt Street to the southeast. Surrounding development includes an Arco gas station to the south, a mix of commercial retail uses to the north, a Circle K convenience store and restaurant at the corner of Frankfurt and Marina, single-family residential development to the northeast and southeast, and Mission Bay approximately 12,000 feet to the west. Site consists of two parcels. The 4.4 acre southern parcel is developed with a 90-unit coastal trailer villa RV park, which includes a single-family unit and a number of small accessory structures. The 1.3 acre northern parcel is used primarily for storage. The structures were constructed between 1939 and 1960, with the main park built in 1947. The property is not a designated historic resource, nor is eligible for designation. The mid-coast trolley, mid-coast corridor transit project is currently under construction and would extend trolley service from Old Town to University City with a stop at Teca Lotte Road in West Marina, approximately 1,700 feet from the site, and service is anticipated to begin in 2001. This is an internal view of the site looking northeast towards Tonopah Avenue. The majority of the 90-space park is vacant with approximately 12 spaces occupied. This is a view looking down from the Tonopah Avenue right-of-way towards Interstate 5. This is a view looking down on the site from Tonopah towards Frankfurt Street. This is a view of the onsite cut slope below Tonopah Avenue. And this is the existing storage lot on the north side with the residential structures indicated in yellow. This is looking south on West Marina Boulevard with the adjacent Arco gas station on the left. This is looking north down Marina Boulevard with the project site on the right. This is a view looking northeast down Frankfurt Street with the project site on the left and residential beyond. The project would demolish the existing improvements and construct the 150 multifamily units in nine three-story structures consisting of 75 one-bedroom and 75 two-bedroom units. Two driveways would be provided, one on Marina and one on Frankfurt, as indicated in red. 267 parking spaces would be provided, where 263 are required, and would consist of 99 attached garages, 53 detached carports, and 115 open spaces. A clubhouse with common area, fitness center, and pool would be provided, as shown in yellow. The single-story buildings are proposed adjacent to Marina to provide a height transition when viewed from the right-of-way. Public improvements would include additional right-of-way dedication, replacement of curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the street frontages, half-width improvements on Marina, including a buffered Class II bike lane. In addition, Tonopah Avenue would have new curb, gutter, and sidewalk, and the installation of a guardrail as Tonopah is substantially taller than the site. Architectural features include plastered walls, archways, wood trellises, recessed windows in a contemporary style, and the maximum 30-foot height of the Claremont Mesa overlay zone would be observed. Here are elevations of the 4,400-square-foot, single-story clubhouse and common area structure. This is a rendering of the project as viewed from Marina Boulevard in Frankfurt, which incorporates the complementing color scheme recommended by the Community Planning Group. And this is a rendering as viewed from Frankfurt Street. The general plan amendment is required to change the designated land uses from commercial, as shown in orange, and residential, as shown in blue, to entirely residential. A community plan amendment is required to change the Claremont Mesa Plan land use designations of low-density residential, as shown in yellow, general commercial, as shown in red, and mobile home park, as shown in brown, to entirely medium-density residential, which would allow a density range of 93 to 186 units, which is consistent with the project. A community plan initiation was approved for the site on October 28th, 2004, by the Planning Commission. A zone change is required to change the zoning from commercial, as shown in pink, and residential, as shown in green, to entirely RM25, which would allow up to 180 units on the site, consistent with the project. As shown in blue, the southern portion of the site is located in the 100-year floodplain. Project is conditioned to raise the base elevation out of the floodplain and obtain a letter of map provision from FEMA. The applicant has requested deviations from the land development code, which are allowed with the approval of a planned development permit. The requested setback in wall height deviations along Tonopah Avenue and Frankfurt are supported due to the existing 5- to 25-foot cut slope, which places the pad substantially lower than surrounding single-family development. The requested deviations along Marina Boulevard are supported as these are required to accommodate existing utility infrastructure and condition street, sidewalk, and bicycle lane improvements. A tiered retaining wall and substantial landscaping along Marina Boulevard are incorporated to offset the impact of these deviations. The personal storage area deviation request is supported as it provides for the purpose and intent of the regulation while allowing design flexibility for better utilization of the site. The applicant is requesting approval of a municipal code amendment, local coastal program amendment, and community plan amendment to remove the mobile home park designation and overlay from the site. The local coastal program amendment is required even though the site is not in the coastal zone as the mobile home map in the coastal program includes the site. The site is not considered a mobile home park because of the size and class of vehicles occupying the site and the short-term tenancy requirements of an RV park. Currently, 12 of the 90, approximately 12 are occupied of the 90, consisting of motorized RVs, automobile trailers, which are not considered mobile homes as defined by the municipal code. There is a history of legal action related to the applicability of mobile home regulations on the site. In 1991, there was litigation between the occupants and the previous owner, and it was determined it was neither a mobile home park because of the size of the vehicles, nor was it an RV park because some of the tenants were not occupying on a permanent, on a temporary basis. In 2000, there was a settlement agreement between the previous owner and city which stipulated that the site is an RV park and vehicles could not be parked there for longer than six months. Another term was that the owner discontinue and prohibit the continued presence of any person on the property more than six months. As part of this settlement, 10 park residents were specifically allowed to remain as permanent residents based on past tenant history, seven of which remain on site. In March 2006, the city attorney determined that vehicles on site do not meet the definition of a mobile home, nor is the site considered a mobile home park. There has been no change in the class of vehicles occupying the park, and no new dwelling units meeting the mobile home definition have been installed since 2006. Although not required under the California Environmental Quality Act, the applicant elected to prepare an environmental impact report for the proposed project, which determined there would be no significant impacts. Staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommended to the city council, approval of the project as proposed and conditioned. City staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Okay, we'll start over on this side this time. Commissioner Hoffman?
Yeah. I thought you were going to clarify. It's just a typo, I believe, in the staff report, but the staff report's part of the record, certainly, to come to the, to get to the resolution, but that the deviation, as stated in the summary, is on Frankfurt Street instead of Tonopah. That's correct, right? I'm looking at page seven, but the side yard reduction?
Correct. And yes, I apologize. We had found that earlier. Yes, that is a correction. The exhibits read correctly, however. The exhibit is. Thank you.
Commissioner Granowitz?
In reading the minutes from the planning committee, it stated that the applicant elected not to include the affordable units on site because the neighbors didn't want them. Do you have any background on the discussion by the neighbors on why they didn't want the affordable on-site?
The minutes provided to me did not clarify the issue. However, the applicant is here, and they could speak to what occurred at the meeting.
And would the applicant have included them if the neighbors had not been opposed? I'm just wondering why we're letting the neighbors decide anyways. Do you have any information on that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Whalen?
The coastal zone doesn't extend east of Highway 5. Can you explain why we have a local coastal plan amendment?
Absolutely. The mobile home park maps, as they appear in the municipal code, also appear as the local coastal program. So in order to remove this site from the map of the municipal code and the local coastal program, we technically have to amend the local coastal program because we are mending the exhibit. It shows little dots for all of the mobile home parks.
Which map?
The, I'd refer to, there's an exhibit where we did strike out underlines. I can find it for you in a moment, to the municipal code. There's a map that actually lists specifically this site as a mobile home park, and we need to remove that. And because the municipal code is part of the local coastal program, we technically need to amend the local coastal program. Long-range planning assisted with reaching out to local, the Coastal Commission early. It sounds like it's potentially done as a de minimis action. We will follow up with that after city council approval.
If I could add on to that, Commissioner Whalen. The mobile home park overlay is part of the land development code, which is our adopted LCP. So because we're changing that map to remove this site, as Mr. Godwin said, that, removing that dot, we then have to go and submit it to Coastal Commission.
I could see this happening in many circumstances, and I've never heard of it happening.
This is actually a pretty common practice.
Give me another example of it.
Another example would be the Midway Plan update, the changes that we're making to that. It's a larger item, but we're making changes to the code itself. So that is part of our LCP.
So, for example, areas, well, there aren't areas east of 5 in the Midway Plan, I don't think. But what I'm getting at is something outside the coastal zone becoming jurisdictional to the Coastal Commission.
So, for instance, when you looked at the uptown community plan amendment, or the update, there were many different code amendments that went with that. One was the change to the interim height limit. And because that is a code, that is an overlay zone, that is part of the municipal code, that was a separate ordinance, and that was subject to Coastal Commission certification. So we separated that out, similar to this, and it was forwarded then to Coastal Commission for certification.
Have you had trouble with it before, doing it?
No, we have monthly coordination meetings with them. So we, like Mr. Godwin had said, we had, when we met with them recently, talked about this site. And as a city, we have three opportunities to submit full packages on LCP updates, as you're familiar with. We believe that because of the limited amount of changes to the code for this, it could be de minimis, but we're working with staff on that. But we, I feel we have a very strong working relationship with Coastal Commission staff currently.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll have to have some remedial training about how to work.
I know. You would think after seven years I'd realize not to pull that while the speaker's on. Just a couple of questions. The site is east of the coastal zone, correct?
That is correct.
And it's not subject to the 30-foot height limit related to the coastal zone?
It is not. It's specific to the Claremont Mesa Community Plan overlay zone for height.
And do you have an exhibit, and maybe you have it now, or you could pull it up at some point during our discussion, of the extent to the 30-foot height limit in the Claremont Plan as it exists today? Because I want to have some idea of why it's there, how many properties it covers. So maybe we can do that. I'm sure the applicant will have more about this, but I'm curious.
And we also have a long-range planning staff here, and planning staff that we could address that. We'll do some research and make sure we can answer it during discussion.
I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that question and give you time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Also, is it my understanding that Claremont Mesa Community Plan is being updated? Is it one of the plans an update?
The Claremont Community Plan is being updated currently.
And is this part of the Claremont, this is in that study area?
This is, yes. This site would be part of that area.
Because I'm curious, again, to my question, how much area are we looking at that the community has put a 30-foot height, self-imposed height limit? And what is the discussions that are happening as part of that update? I know it'll come to us as a workshop, but that's another question for you to be thinking about. And third, as we look towards the Marina study, I believe that has come forward or will be coming forward to us, the transit study with development proposal? Balboa?
Well, there's two. We have Balboa, and then we also have Marina, that are specific plans. And neither of those have come forward to you yet to date.
And it's the Balboa that this site is within, that study area, or adjacent to it?
I can answer that question. Michael Prince, Long Range Planner, excuse me, Planning Department. The site before you today is within the Marina corridor-specific plan area, and it's also part of the Claremont Mesa Community Plan area within the, that is subject to the Claremont Mesa Community Plan update. There was a workshop that was held last year on the Marina corridor-specific plan, and staff is currently reviewing the environmental impact report. The public comment period just closed, and so we're going through that process.
Okay, so I would just want to talk with you more during our Q and A of what's proposed for densities and heights based on that specific plan. Thank you.
We, just for information, Balboa is coming before us on November 8th. And I asked the attorney about what level of discussion we can have about items that are coming before us in the future. I just want to be cautious about how we conduct that discussion.
I understand. I just wanted to, I completely agree with you, and I want to tread carefully. That's why I'm asking the question now and giving all of staff, including the attorney, to give us advice and input. But I am concerned, we have a project that has a certain community sentiment and has the great deal of potential, I believe, for development within a corridor that should have a density that I'm not seeing. And it's within our purview to ask these questions. So my concern is, is just...
I agree. I think when we...
Get it out there for the staff to think about.
As part of the project discussion, I think we have this, you know, we have a project before us, and we have all these other moving parts. And because one of those specific parts is coming before us here in a month, that we, we're cautious, we're cognizant of that discussion. I have a couple of questions as well. First of all, I'd like the attorney to comment on the preparation of an EIR and the level of review and the, kind of the legal standing of an EIR versus a negative deck or mitigated negative deck. That may influence our discussion a little as we come forward a little bit later. So I know there's a standard.
Are you speaking of the substantial evidence standard? Yes. So with respect to an EIR, you're looking at whether substantial evidence, there's substantial evidence to support the findings in the EIR. When you're looking at the, a negative deck, you have the fair argument standard. So to the extent there is a fair argument that there is a potential significant impact caused by this project, you would then need to then go into EIR status. So there is, you know, that different requirement.
So the point being, it's gone, it is an EIR. And so we're in a, when staff responds, that, the level of analysis there is different than in the negative deck world. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Also, I'd like to, I did not see this, but if you could, and you don't have to do it right now, I'd like to know where the existing and planned transit stops are in proximity to this project. I don't know if you had that exhibit, but somewhere along the line, you could show us that. And lastly, am I correct to assume, because this is not a coastal height limit issue, it's a city overlay zone, the applicant could have taken advantage of the city's density bonus program and as an incentive, went with the project with a higher height limit? Is that true?
That is correct. The density bonus regulations could apply to the site if they had been utilized.
Okay. Those are good things to know. Yes, Commissioner Granowitz?
One last thing. On page S-3, under Areas of Controversy, it talks about community character. And there's no description of what the actual community character is other than that I could find in reading this stuff, just that the public seemed to think the project was not consistent with the community character. And having driven this area, well, because I shop there and have friends there, I can't see a discernible community character on the street at all. So I think it's not clear what the community character is.
It, you know, as described in the staff report, is certainly a transitional area. In this particular site, you have varying levels of commercial. There's retail, there's wholesale use, there's two gas stations. It's definitely a community in transition, which I assume will be addressed during the community plan update. The environmental analyst, Courtney Holla, watches here. She could speak to what went behind the preparation of the community character section.
It's almost a rhetorical question, because it's sort of a specious argument in that there is no real community character other than mishmash, substandard buildings that are a variety of uses with looks. There is consistency in the residential above, but there is nothing that I see that speaks to a consistent community character. So I think it's another argument that gets used, that I just want to be clear that it's, in this case, I believe that was a specious argument.
Okay. Commissioner Pearson, did you have another comment, or did I just miss? Okay. Why don't, why don't we go then to open up the public comment? I have three speaker slips in favor. Each speaker will have three minutes. It looks like one of the speakers asked for more for presentation, but we're, unless you have additional speakers that will cede your time, you'll have three minutes this morning. We'll start with Erin Cullen. Erin?
Oh, I just put in there that I was...
Okay. Okay. James Lamateri? And James will be followed by Ed McCoy.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is James Lamateri, and I'm a spokesperson for Raise the Balloon. Raise the Balloon was a, is a community group formed when the Marina Boulevard Station Area Planning Study was released in February of 214. I also sit on the subcommittee that is tasked with advising our Claremont Community Planning Group on the community's recommendations on the Marina-specific plan. The project lies within the Marina-specific plan. We support the Fairfield project. The developer reject, the developer respected our 30-foot height limit, met directly with community members, attended most of the subcommittee meetings regarding the Marina plan, and held a presentation for the community, complete with a 3D model of the project. Essentially, they let the community weigh in. Fairfield should have had approval long ago for their project, but they were the unwitting victim of the city planning department's refusal to include the land use and zoning for the Claremont portion of the draft Marina plan. If you remember, and you may or may not, at the presentation by the city of the draft plan in April of 2017, Chairman Haas, you recommended that the city planners include the land use and zoning element of the plan so that, quote, "certainty not only for the community and what they will see, but also for the private landowners and developers could be provided." City staff rejected your advice, and developments like Fairfield have paid the price of the long delays for project approval. We encourage you to approve the Fairfield project and facilitate the building of much-needed middle-market or workforce housing our community desperately needs. We also encourage you to insist that city staff follow your recommendations and include land use and zoning in the Claremont portion of the draft Marina plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And my last speaker slip I have is Ed McCoy. If anyone else would like to address the commission on this item, please submit a speaker slip.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Ed McCoy with Fairfield Residential. And I'd like a point of clarification. I do have a lot to cover here because there's been a lot of questions from the commission. My, I'm with a couple of members of my office, Sean Finch and Brendan Hayes. If they could cede their time for me, because I do have a presentation as well.
Yes, they can, if they'll give me a speaker slip. How many speakers do you have? Two?
Two. Probably going to take me 10 minutes or so.
Why don't we start with nine minutes? And since you have two other speaker slips, that's, the three of you will give you nine, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll do the best I can. Obviously, the commission has hit on a lot of issues that have, you know, come up throughout the process. So what I'd like to do is take you back to how this all started and walk you through the timeline, and then you'll understand, I hope, how we got to where we are today and why there's not affordable housing proposed on this particular property. We're local San Diego developers. We understand there's a housing crisis in San Diego. We've built in San Diego many times. We've put full, affordable communities in, in the Potway area of San, in the city of San Diego. So we're very familiar with the issue. We actually got involved with this project about three and a half years ago. We met with staff because the Marina Boulevard corridor specific plan was getting kicked off. It was right after the Red Balloon issue came up with the height limits in the community. So we went into this process with open eyes, knowing that we're going to need to get the community support on this project if we're going to have an opportunity to go forward. There was a lot of turbulence going on in the community. There was a lot of turbulence going on in the city. So we met with senior staff, and staff basically told us that we're going to have to do all the heavy lifting on this, that they were going to do the plan, but we had to get the community support. And that the in-lu fee was the, I mean, the in-lu fee is what the code says now. That's what everybody is directed to do. And three and a half years ago, that was what everybody was doing. That's why we proformed that. About a year and a half into the process, as Mr. Lamateri said, we were notified that we were not going to be able to go along with this Marina corridor-specific plan, and that we had to go it alone. So we had to prepare, again, trying to protect ourselves because of all the issues going on in the area. We provided, or we proposed to do an environmental impact report. As the city attorney said, you know, the environmental impact report gives us some assurance and some protection in case something does go sideways, and we need to have that. Throughout that period, we worked with the community. We worked with all of the neighbors, and we worked with city staff on getting a project that was acceptable to everyone and also to us. I will say that the delays have caused us to actually have to close on the property before we wanted to. We don't have the entitlements yet. We do own the property now, and that was because of the delays that we incurred. We worked with the subcommittee, the Marina Boulevard Subcommittee. They approved the land use and the project. We worked with the Community Planning Group. They approved it, as well as their land use Subcommittee. And I think that you may have also received emails from many of the community members in support of this project. The environmental impact report had five comments, and three of them were in support. There's no one here in opposition, that I understand. So again, this is a fully supported project. We have the in-lu fee proposed because if we were to propose to do the density bonus, we would have to go taller, and we would do a parking reduction. The community had three issues that they wanted us to respect: the height limit, adequate parking, and public improvements. And we've hit every one of those boxes. We've given them what they want. This is an appropriate project for this particular site. And as I go through the presentation, I'll talk through that, and then I'll answer any questions. My entire design team is here as well. Thank you. As I said, Fairfield's a local company. We are based in San Diego. All we do is multifamily housing. So again, we're very familiar with affordable housing. We build it all the time. We build it throughout California. We're privately owned, and we do everything from site acquisition, development. We build it and we manage it. So we're soup to nuts. We're there from beginning to end. We've developed over 100,000 apartment homes across the country, and we manage about 50,000 at this point. And we do pride ourselves on the experience of our staff. I've been with the company 20 years, and I'm the new guy. We have people with us that's been 25, 30 years. Just a couple pictures. This is going to shoot through a little bit, let couples go. But we build high-quality. You know, our goal is to create a very nice community that people obviously want to live in for a long time. You know where the site is. It's been an RV park for a couple decades, actually a few decades. On West Marina Boulevard, you can see the ponding and the gutter. This particular intersection with Frankfurt has drainage issues. We're going to be repairing those and fixing those, expanding the sidewalks, providing a nice pedestrian experience on both street frontages. Again, here's Frankfurt. There's no sidewalk. There's going to be an enhanced sidewalk with street trees. Again, Frankfurt. And Tonopah, I would like to clarify one thing that Paul mentioned. Tonopah is going to be improved with curb and gutter. It does not have a sidewalk. We're also going to have a rail up there as well to protect people from going over the side. And as you can see, we're well below Tonopah, and that did factor... did factor in, again, the height issue. Public dedication, we're going to be providing, go ahead, Paul, I think it's going to do something here. Yeah. We're going to be providing additional land on both Frankfurt as well as Big Marina and Little Marina. Okay, the site plan, if you look at it, that had evolved as well. The buildings are situated in that particular orientation in order to provide airflow up the hill and views from those above going, looking southwest, if you will. We also moved the entrance to close to Marina Boulevard to coincide with the alley across the street because the neighbors on Frankfurt were concerned about people coming out and getting headlights in their homes because they're right at Frankfurt. Additionally, we added fencing around Frankfurt to, again, provide, basically to prevent people or give them a reason not to park on Frankfurt and then walk to their units across the sidewalk into the project. So they wanted to funnel people into the project itself. Go ahead. You've seen these photos from Paul's presentation. So in summary, you know, we prepared a site plan that's sensitive to the existing neighborhood. We've done it over the course of three years and working with all the different entities involved and the different stakeholders. We did a full EIR, which, again, was, the question was, you know, there's a reason that we did that, obviously, because, again, this is a very active neighborhood, which I'm sure you're all aware, and James can attest to as well. Obviously, we're paying significant fees for parks, and we're also going to be paying a significant in-lug fee. I'm sure you're all aware, the in-lug fee just went up 54% in the last couple months. So it's not a small number that we have to pay, and we're paying a significant amount for that as well. We're removing an eyesore along a very important corridor in the city of San Diego. We're providing residence for those local businesses. I mean, the community character, if I can hint on that, the reason there's no real community character is because there's no new development. This is going to help start to find that. And when you start putting in a 50, $60 million project, it allows other people to start thinking about, hey, let's invest in this area as well. So then you start getting, you know, projects that come in, and they start looking similar or at least providing character. Again, substantially increases the property's tax base. The tax base alone on this property grew up over 10 times what it is today when this is developed. And again, as I just said, it creates impetus for future investment. We exceed the current industry standard parking ratio, but we also comply with the city's parking standards, and we do have property management on-site 24/7. So with that, I mean, I'm here to address any additional questions. We have our whole design team, including Carlos Rodriguez, the architect. If there's any questions, you know, certainly we'd be happy to answer those. And we do look forward to moving this project forward. And I would ask that the commission support the local neighborhood planning group as well as the Marina Boulevard corridor specific plan committee and approve this project. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for him.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
You mentioned that there were three key components that the neighbors were really looking for and, but I didn't hear you mention inclusionary housing. Could you discuss if you thought about that? My understanding was that the neighbors were opposed to having inclusionary housing, but can you discuss that and what your thoughts are on that?
Well, it's, it's not as simple as saying that they're opposed to it. What happened was, we were in this process for two years, and obviously, the affordable housing crisis is front and center now. Three years ago, it wasn't really being talked about. We were paying fees. The developers were paying in-lug fees. So we provided, you know, that we did this project, designed it, moved it forward, and then within about the past year, obviously, affordable housing became a very significant issue in San Diego. Commission, the community asked us what it would, you know, what that means, and what we told them was, if we had to do affordable housing on the property, we would have to use the density bonus, and we would have to go taller, and we would reduce the parking. And that's when they said, we don't want that. It wasn't that we don't want affordable housing. It's that we don't want you guys to go above the height limit. We don't want you to reduce the parking. And frankly, if we did that, we'd have to start over the EIR as well. So we'd be caught into a long delay, and we just asked that we move forward.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, thank you. I think we will, one last call for public testimony. If not, we'll close. Public testimony, and we'll go to the commission. Yes, sir? I'm not sure. I mean, I'm closing public testimony, but you've had your opportunity.
I just wanted to speak on the.
Why don't you come up just very briefly?
Just briefly on the affordable housing issue. We want affordable housing in Bay Park, Overlook Heights. What we felt as a community was that we could.
Can we take just one step back? When you say "we," are you a member of the planning group?
I'm the member of a subcommittee advising the planning group on the Marina specific plan, but I'm speaking as James Lamateri, spokesperson for Raise the Balloon, which is a resident community group. Not official, not official.
Okay, so when you say "we," you're.
Speaking for basically the residents of the community, so.
All right. I just want to note who.
Or majority of them. So what we see is a real opportunity for affordable housing in the project that's proposed in Linda Vista. So there's a project proposed.
Okay. We're going to stay stuck on this project today.
Okay.
And so if you have a comment specific to this project.
I understand. But I didn't want the thought to go forward that the community didn't want affordable housing. We just see that it's.
You want it somewhere else.
Appropriate in bigger, bigger projects.
You want it somewhere else. Okay. Heard that one before. Thank you. All right. I'm going to close public testimony. And we'll go, Commissioner Pearson, I don't know if you're next or not, but if you are, go ahead. Okay, Commissioner Whalen?
Well, the challenge we have here is to craft a balance that's sensitive to the neighborhood but responds to the multi-billion dollar investment in the trolley. And I think that's the conundrum we have, is if we don't respond to that opportunity to create density in that corridor, we'll never get another federal dollar for transit. So that means we're going to need to deal with the Claremont community plan's inconsistency with the realities of this. And that starts with the height limit. And, you know, there we go, running, running head-on into the main community objection.
Since you brought that up, I've asked staff to bring up an exhibit. And if I understand the exhibit correctly, and it is in our staff report, but it's a cross-section, Section AA of Attachment 19. So here's the project in a cross-section, and what you can see to the right is Tonopah Avenue, which looks like it's between 10 and 15 feet above the maximum height of the buildings. So this is one of those issues that has concerned me about the height limit in this particular area of the city, where the development on Marina Boulevard is well below the residential neighborhoods above. And I've, if this, if I look at this correctly, this is my frustration over imposing a height limit that is not affecting anything. And the opportunity for that height limit on a selective basis or on a discreet basis to be addressed rather than a wet blanket over the entire community.
I don't think I could agree more.
And I agree with your conundrum that we're in.
So I would, I have a quibbling thing. There were only two color renderings in our entire package. It was very hard to get a feel for what the, the project looked like. It just came across as sort of bland and beige without any real sense of what the project would be like. What was the other thing? I think what we're going to have happen when the subsequent projects come forward north of this is we're really going to need to grapple with this height limit because there is a way to, to address the concerns of the predominantly single-family neighborhood behind this row of, eclectic is the, is the community character term I would use for this area, just to be flattering. But we're running head-on into a conflict where it says in Attachment 23 that the, a goal, the Claremont community plan, the primary goal, is to maintain the low-density character of predominantly single-family neighborhoods. That's the street right behind Marina. So I'm just going to put this out there right now. I don't have an answer. I can tell people in the audience that we've been more and more reluctant to have people get through without including the units on the property. It's, it's, it's not helping to have the inclusionary housing and the fee being paid at the same time. We need the housing. So I want to hear what my other commissioner have to say, but I'm troubled.
Thank you. Commissioner Art Suji, I'd hope that perhaps in your previous tour of duty, you could help us with this, but I see the minutes show that you were absent at the initiation. So you're, you're, you're starting over like us, I think.
I did notice that, and I can't even remember it. And I says, oh, my God, you know, it's coming back. Let me start with, you know, commenting on the, the team. The applicant, they have a great reputation for quality work. During the Cedar Fire, you know, we were burnt out. And at that time, and this is disclosure also, I was working for Fairfield on a couple of projects. But they do quality work in regards to the type of product they end up with. Also, the consulting team that they have is excellent. I have no problems with the team itself. But I guess I'm kind of concerned, you know, I guess it comes down to the process more than anything else. And I'll just start with the site plan. I saw a, a, originally, I guess it was one of the first site plans, and it was a better site plan than what you have today. You explained why you got to where you are in regards to the site plan, and one of the main factors was, I believe, was the view corridors. Can you come up? Was that one of the major factors in regards to how the site plan was developed? I mean, can you give us any criteria of, you know, how you started out with this site plan versus the one I saw with the clubhouse, courtyard, the pool area, the pool house in the center of the project, which was more integral to the site and to the units itself, and how you would be able to have a better circulation there? Just give me an idea of how you got to where you are today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ed McCoy, again. We started out looking at a lot of different site plans for this particular property. One thing that we had to consider in the site plan that you looked at was the flood zone. If you look at the corner of Frankfurt and Marina Boulevard, we're going to have to raise that about six, seven feet or so. The site plan that you have probably had a three-story building on that corner, and that would have created basically a four-story building at that intersection. What we decided to, and we also had an access point that had headlights heading out into the neighbors, you know, that we have single-family homes right across from Frankfurt. So we had, we pushed the, the access point to the south, if you will, to coincide with the alley across the street so it wouldn't create any conflicts with the neighbors. And we put our single-story building on the corner, which is the clubhouse, so that it wouldn't create a wall of building as you come up to that particular intersection.
If you didn't have the height restriction, could you have done a better design on that corner and still come up with a better site plan?
Well, you know, I could, I would think that if we didn't have all of the factors that we have to deal with, which is, obviously, we don't necessarily always want to fight 150 people in a, you know, in a meeting and a hearing. We would, obviously, if we had no height factor, we would have a different product type, frankly. We would probably be building a wrap product or a podium product. In that particular case, it would be a lot more expensive, and we've already closed on the land. So we couldn't, at this point, it's too late to go back.
And, and you know, that's the point I'm getting at.
Oh, I totally, I, you know, folks, excuse me, Commissioner, we knew that this would be the issue. I mean, we've been in this process for three and a half years, and because of the delays that we've been hit with, we're now right in the crux of this storm. And what we're asking you folks to do is to understand that this project has been vetted. This is something that the neighborhood and us have worked close together with. And at the time when we, when we did our financials for this project, the in-lug fee was the acceptable route.
I understand. You went through five semidays.
We've gone through.
We saw that.
Yeah. I mean, this has been a process that we've been in for a long time, and I'm just asking you, pleading with you, to allow us to go. But we played by the rules. And we played by the rules for this whole process. While we're asking for some deviations, they're because of the site conditions.
And I understand that. Let me get, let me get on the positive side. The, the site plan, I mean, the landscape design that you have is very good. The mixture of the trees, shrubs, and ground cover material are great. That's where, I believe, you made up for the absence of, of some excitement in the architecture. I think, once you put the architecture and the landscape together, I think it's a very good compliment. I think if you look at the planning palette, that kind of enhances the architecture because it's so bland with the colors that you have there, more than anything else. One of the comments on Marina Boulevard and also Frankfurt is that probably the parkway and the street tree design could have been a little better. And the reason this, this project is so important is basically the first one on that corridor. So it's important to us to really look at it critically and give a good example that we can point to as the, as a development occurs along this corridor. It's very important. It's the first one, and, you know, you're, you're the first one on the block right now. So you're going to, you're going to hear a lot of comments on a lot of different issues. But the landscape is integrated very well. I mean, I could, you know, I can get really down to the details and not agree with it, but the combination that they have works out for the project. It's just the parkway could be a little better. And the reason I say that, that is your front door to this project and, and this area. I mean, it's a very critical, key area along that corridor more than anything else. I have some other comments, but I'll let some of the other commissioners make their comments, and I'll get back to you.
While you're there, you made a comment earlier. I believe your density is probably 25, 27 right now. You're not pushing the entire density, but pretty close to it. You mentioned that you might do a wrap product, project here, and I thought those are usually going to push 50 or more to the acre, going into the acre. What, when you do a wrap project, your company, which your sweet spot is, what type of density do you get?
Wraps, you know, 50 to 70 units an acre.
So the potential for this site is over twice of what we're, what we're considering today. Okay. Just wanted to get some context. Thank you.
That's true.
Any other questions for the applicant? I mean, while you're here, he might as well.
I do.
Don't want you jumping up and down like a jack-in-the-box. I've had to do that in my life, and it's.
I have one question. You guys are well-known and well-respected for what you do. One of the challenges we've had in this commission is, is coming up with, as Chairman Haas put it, the sweet spot, because we're very frustrated that when we give opportunities for high, high, high density, we don't get it. Why is that? And what can be done? And what is the highest density for the, for the most number of units? And we're very, we're more than easy with small units, like micro-units. What is it that does the trick?
Well, Commissioner, it's, it's a myriad of things. You know, obviously, when you go to that type of density, the construction costs, they don't go up incrementally. They go up, you know, yeah, multiple times. So you have to then have a land value that can work with that type of hard costs, that type of project costs. So when you're looking at a project like this, and we have our land value set because, based on, you know, how the, as you're very aware, as a pro forma setup, I think that the way that it works is by giving a tremendous amount of incentives to developers. Like, the density bonus is a great program. We use it, we use density bonus throughout the state. We're doing it right now in a number of projects, in Los Angeles in particular as well. So I think you have to, you have to have the incentives available for the development community to be able to use them. Some incentives just don't work no matter what you do. So it's all about land value, hard costs. And I have Brendan Hayes here with me tonight, today. He's, he does all of our underwriting on these projects. He may be able to provide more insight on that.
Please have him come up. Because if it's 50 to 70 to the acre, that works. Tell us.
I mean, it really does come down to cost. Oh, Brendan Hayes with Fairfield Residential. And, yeah, and as Ed said, each time you bump up density, costs increase exponentially. And, you know, you might see from this, you know, it, it comes down to then looking at what you could, you know, kind of perceive as a rental rate or return, and then does that product make sense? And so when I, you know, I'll go to, you know, any new site anywhere is, you know, we'll look at what we see as sort of the, you know, income potential of, of that area, and that helps determine what product that we would design for that, that particular site, and where it would yield, you know. Quite often, a lower density would yield a higher land residual.
And so? And so?
So, on this one here?
Yeah.
You know, when we originally underwrote this and looked at it, it was, again, this goes back, as Ed mentioned, you know, it's actually probably more like four years ago when we were starting the underwriting. Looking at the wrap and the garden style, which is what we're proposing here, it was fairly similar in terms of the returns at that, at that time. And, and we haven't, we haven't re-underwritten it because, you know, this is what we've designed.
Other extenuating circumstances, but what you're saying, I think I'm hearing you're saying, is that you could make a higher density work in the absence of the other factors you were considering.
Way back when?
Yes.
Yes. Today, today, I, I'm not sure, because, you know, when we started this, I mean, I would say that, you know, we're almost double the cost, you know, on those higher-density ones than we were back then.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move on to Commissioner Hoffman. As we do, I would ask the commission, as we consider a motion today, and certainly consideration given the long history of this project, again, initiated in 2004, there was not an opportunity for this commission to provide input as to what we think today. So, you're dealing, with no disrespect to that commission, by the way, because I looked at who was on that commission, and many highly qualified people, including Commissioner Arsuji, that we, as a commission, might want to add some language to our motion today. And we may also consider representing our position at the city council. This is the case study of whether we're going to address the housing issues and the global climate change issues and the cap, or we're going to just try to put a project together that makes some, makes sense, which you've done, by the way, and don't take this as anything disrespectful. But the world's changed, and I'd like the commission to consider how we send that message. So, I'll go to Commissioner Hoffman. Thank you.
So, what do you want me to say? No, I'm just kidding.
Save me.
Actually, I was going to speak to that, and I am going to make a motion after my comments here. But I, I agree, we're in a conundrum. But I do weigh the fact that, that this applicant has been in the process for so long, and he is meeting the rules. I'd like to see affordable housing on-site, but I thought the answer, the reason for that, it, it does make some sense, but I'd much prefer it. If we were starting over, we could go back in time, that, hopefully, you know, we could push that. But I think back in those days, it wasn't the push that it is today. I'm person, I'm okay with the design. I'm okay with the overall project. I looked at the deviations very carefully, and I do believe that the deviations make this project better. It's, it's more desirable. I, I just don't think an applicant who's been in the process this long and has worked so closely with the neighborhood and so closely with staff should be penalized for a change of attitude that, that he had nothing to do with. So, so I, I can support this project. I would like the idea, Chairman, of maybe adding to the motion, and I'll let others kind of formulate the wording, that we send a message to council. But for this project, I think the, the bottom line is, it's a, it's a very good project, certainly a lot better than what's been on there for two decades. So, so I'm ready to make that motion, and I'm going to move that we recommend that the city council certify the EIR, that we approve the municipal code and local coastal program amendment, that we recommend that the city council approve the community plan and general plan amendment, that they recommend that the council approve the rezone, approve the vesting tentative map, the site development permit, and the plan development permit.
Second, I'll come up with some language.
Thank you. Commissioner Pearson.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with all the comments that have been made by the commissioners before me. This is a community plan amendment, and we have the opportunity to add more density. The community doesn't want that extra density. I appreciate that the applicant has worked so hard. Not all applicants work this hard with the community, but I believe, given the time that's passed, the sentiments that changed, and the fact that you went through five reviews, when I look at that, I see money went into five reviews that could have gone into other things, such as the in-lug, rather than the in-lug fee, doing, going with the first site plan that Commissioner Arsuji talked about. That's water under the bridge. You're a quality firm, doing quality work, and I think, in my opinion, this has been a design by committee that hasn't served you. So, I'm going to go through comments, and maybe some of these are the message to the city council, and maybe some of these are the messages we move forward with these specific plan and the community plan update, for what I believe along a transit priority area, which this is, within a quarter to half mile of walking distances to transit, that we need to have more density. I don't believe the 30-foot height limit outside of the coastal zone is warranted. If you look at the communities, the older communities, North Park, Normal Heights, University, City, they have the same issue. There is single-family adjacent to commercial corridors. This is not new. There's also areas where the topography is flat. The topography here, I completely agree with Chairman Haas. And if you could, Paul, could you go to that section? I'm not asking you to redesign. I want to be very careful here. As much as I don't like the density, I think this property has been under, will be eventually under-belt. I think the design is going to set a precedent, and I'm not sure that the color palette or the materials is the direction that I would see along this corridor, but I know you've been working hard with the community, and this is what the community wants. But I think there's a real downside when you design by committee, and I think we're seeing that. What I'd like to talk about is this section, because if you think about how we're looking at other neighborhoods in the city that density has increased along transit corridors, that are bus transit, as well as public transit, such as light rail, it's no different. If you were to look at this section, on the left is Marina Boulevard, four to six stories, on the right could be an alley in North Park, and east of that, to the right of that section, is single-family homes. So, there are conditions that I believe we have with a site this large and other sites this large along Marina, to really densify along Marina Boulevard. There is no public view. There is no other housing to the west. There's a freeway. I mean, when you think about these site conditions, you've got two sides that you really need to be sensitive to, the north and the east. And I'm not saying it's, it's, it's not important to look at the single-family. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying we should not leave any density on the table, and this project leaves density on the table. One of the things I think that's important in this is that it also sets the precedent for this, the design of Marina Boulevard. So, I had a question. I do agree that the landscape is quite nice. I like the fact on Marina Boulevard that it has a non-contiguous sidewalk. So, that's a busy street. Cars are traveling very fast. So, there's a separation between the pedestrian by that planting strip. Will there be area, as you work with MTS, MTDB, Sandag, will there be area for you to add a shelter, bus stop, shelter? So, we see more than just a, a sign. I would hope there'd be a bench. There's a lot of people that are going to live there, and they're going to want to go to the beach, and they're going to want to take transit. So, one thing that I would like to see, again, I don't want to design on the dais. That's not my role. But I think it's really important with this project, within proximity, someone may even take a bus to get to the transit station. I'm thinking of those folks as well. So, I'm just asking staff, if there is a part of the design, I'm asking the applicant, and if there can be a note, so that we really do. I want the streetscape to have set a very positive precedent, which I think it will, but I'm asking it to go one step further in addressing public transit.
The project is conditioned to provide the MTS bus pad, and I think this issue was discussed during the review process with the applicant as well, and Ed can speak to that. But it is a condition for the pad, and of course, we can send, through your motion, we can send a message to the city council.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, there is an existing bus stop on Little Marina Boulevard, right at Tonopah and Little Marina, and we will be improving that.
I saw that on your, your existing photo. And I've had this comment before, and it usually ends up, we have to negotiate with the, the bus service designers. I would like to go one further, one further, to see that we could have a shelter to provide shade. If there's a way that there, we can describe that maybe as amenities. So, there's a bench. I mean, we, we want to elevate the use of public transit, and one way to do that is to make it a comfortable place to wait for a bus.
We're, we're not opposed to that at all.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Pearson, if I could just ask, Rob, briefly, to consider, I think what we're getting at is asking the applicant to potentially consider a shelter at this existing bus stop, and we all recognize that this purview is under MTS. So, unfortunately, we as city staff in the city can't require the applicant, but we can encourage, strongly encourage that they work with MTS to potentially add a shelter to the stop. Is that the intention?
That's what I'm saying, including site furnishings. You know, I would hope there would be a bench.
Okay, I just want to make that clear on the.
Whatever, site, site furnishings and, and shelter would be encouraged. Thank you.
I guess I'm surprised that MTS didn't comment on this project. I assume the EIR went to them. Maybe not. Courtney, are you, do you have some information on that for us?
It just surprises me, because in the past, they usually are pretty aggressive about stuff.
We did send the, let me confirm that, but MTS should have received the EIR, and we didn't receive any comments from them. We did receive a comment letter from Sandag, and they did mention, I believe, the transit-oriented development. But, yeah.
It is fascinating, because in the past, there was a sort of letters we didn't want to get, and now they're letters we want to get. We've come full circle. Mr. Granowitz?
I, I wasn't finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I want to make it really clear, I'm supporting the project. I also want to make it very clear, and I think these are some statements that I would like to see as a friendly amendment, that the 30-foot height limit be studied, because it is, in my opinion, limiting the quality of the design. It's limiting the potential, potential density along transit priority area and within walking distance of major public transit improvements. I completely agree with Commissioner Wayland. Billions of dollars are going into our ridership, but we have to prove that we have the numbers. If we don't build the density, we're not going to make those numbers. One, and two, every community needs to contribute their fair share, every community. And there's not any reason to go from a low density to a medium density of 30, when we could build 50 to 70. And I, that is what I would like to see. And I know I need to be careful and tread lightly, as the city attorney has said, but these are the kind of dialogues, these are the kind of discussions that we need as a planning commission, because we set land use and urban design framework across the city. And for fair and consistency, I would like to see this going forward as we see the specific plan and the community plan update, and that's what I'll be looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Granowitz?
I'm the former chair of the North Park Planning Committee, and even four years ago, North Park was well aware of the problems with enough housing in this community. So, to say that the conditions weren't known three years ago is not accurate at all. How North Park dealt with the issue of housing-abutting commercial districts is that we included in our design guidelines ways that you would step back the development as it came closer to housing. And this project doesn't do that. And I'm, I think, I think the residents aren't going to support anything that includes density, particularly in the more wealthy parts of their community. I think that kind of has to be said. And partly, I say that because in the public comment, it was said that they would support affordable and density inland of Vista, which is the poorer part of the community. And I think that's a real social equity issue, and I think that's problematic. I think we all have to take our fair share. Also, we don't protect public views. I hear that all the time in La Jolla, private views. We don't protect them. And we, we vote against projects all the time in La Jolla, and so somewhere, we need to be clearer about that. But I think that as you're doing the community plan, you need to maybe look at what we did in North Park, where we moved the density towards the transportation corridors and stepped it down as it came closer to residential, as one way of trying to make that work. I also find that the project is bland, and it will set precedent for what the other projects that come forward after that. And I would encourage the community to decide what they want their community character to look like, rather than letting the projects do that. I know in North Park, at 30th and University, the first project that got through was challenging for everybody, and the architecture ended up being bland, but then we tried to get more involved, so that, I mean, at that time, that was all that the developer could get through. So, I, I really appreciate how hard the applicant has worked. I, I mean no offense at all. So, that was the 80s, though, and we've tried to remedy that and make it easier for developers by putting in what we wanted the community character within that area to look like. And so, the community needs to do that, rather than just say it doesn't agree with the community character, and there is nothing there. And the character shouldn't be defined by the housing in back, because that's a different zone, area, and it isn't the commercial area. I will support this project, not because I really think it's the right project with the right density. I'm concerned that we're rewarding bad behavior, not by the developer. The developer was responding to the community. But it's not fair that some of us are willing to take the density adjacent to wealthier communities within my community, but other communities aren't, and we don't have the opportunity for the transportation that you guys in Claremont are getting, and we would kill for that. And so, I would like to clearly send a message that you need to be doing the affordable units on-site. We need to be developing to the higher density, and the community needs to get on board and figure out how you can make it work, instead of just saying no. Because all you guys ever do is just saying no. And at some point, they're going to take, do legislation at a state level, and you won't be able to just say no. And in North Park, that's what we, we did. We knew that if we didn't decide where it would go in as fair a way as possible. And trust me, people in my community hate my guts, some of them. We have people show up at the planning committee to protest what we did, but it was the right thing for the greater good, and not for my generation or your generation, but for your children and your children's children. And we need to start thinking about that more. And I know I'm a broken record, but I'm done.
Commissioner Wayland?
Let me try some language out. There would be accompanying message to the city council, and I like the song you're singing there. You're not a broken record. It's basically, it's something like, I'll just try this out. "This is a good project, given that the applicant had to deal with an outmoded height limit and strong neighborhood pressure to reduce density. We recommend that the city council not consider this a precedent for future projects. We also wish to emphasize that the city of San Diego cannot squander the opportunity to add housing next to a trolley line and risk the loss of future federal funding for transit. A key needed change is to the height limit, which needs, needs to be reviewed and changed to permit appropriate density, including on-site affordable housing." Something like that.
And I'm happy to include that into the motion.
Great. I have a quest, question.
Sure.
As I mentioned, I think the streetscape, streetscape is very critical for this project. And if I could have that come forward? I'm not going to try to redesign it. We're not going to try to redesign it, but I would like for you to consider both on Frankfurt and both Marina Boulevard. like for you to consider both on Frankfurt and both Marina Boulevard, that you consider, consider a non-contiguous sidewalk throughout, not just portions of it. If, if there's, there's no criteria that, that you have to follow in regards to that. What that does, it provides a more welcoming front door for your project along with, you know, you don't have to march the trees down every 30 feet, as long as you can meet the, the quantity of trees that you have on that street, you can put them anywhere you want with the exception of respecting utilities and all those things. So, you know, if you would consider that along with possibly adding a few more trees and, you know, have your design, your landscape architect look at that because that is something that is going to make your project more attractive and the most important thing is that it's going to set a precedent. I want to make sure that the landscape architect from the city really studies, especially Marina Boulevard, to make sure that this is going to be the streetscape that we follow all the way to the north. I want to, you know, I just don't want this to be just one piece and everything else is completely different. I think this is a precedence that you have to set on the streetscape more than anything else, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Those are good comments. I will say that we don't, first of all, I'll say we, we have no problem doing what you're, what you're saying if it's possible. The street cross-sections and the sidewalk locations are based on the city standards. So as long as the city's okay with adjusting those for this project, we can work with that.
Okay, as long as, you know, you understand what I'm trying to say in regards to that.
Yes, you, you want a non-contiguous sidewalk on Marina and you want not necessarily a regimented tree spacing and to potentially add more trees as well.
Correct, because you, you know, you have a very natural setting of trees in the interior of the project. I want it to kind of follow to the, the perimeter of it more than anything else.
Commissioner Otsuji, I would, I, I would be happy to add that as a condition, but I would like to hear from staff to see if that presents a problem.
I don't believe it does, there is a full 14-foot right-of-way being dedicated in, in this area, so it'd be a matter of the applicant working with our landscape reviewers to find a palette that works.
Yeah, that's what I saw too. And also, when you go with, inside the property, you provided more space there, so there's great opportunity to, you know, really, you know, provide that great front door for this project.
There's one thing that just came to my mind, I know along Marina Boulevard, there's some utilities that might cause conflicts with some trees.
I understand that.
So we'll, we'll work with that.
Work with that.
Okay, thank you.
Just very quickly, Paul Godwin, Development Services, the street tree placement, the right-of-way improvements were a very intricate part of this project. The way the utilities converge at this particular intersection, because you have three streets, was extremely complicated, so we're very sensitive to your comments, we'll definitely include it, but just to make sure everyone's aware, this was kind of a long process, just getting what we could get in terms of what we have today. I don't know that there's going to be major opportunities. Again, the transmission lines, sewer, water, everything, it is extremely complex, but we'll definitely keep it in mind and do the best we can.
May I ask a clarification? There's two parts, there's big Marina Boulevard and little Marina Boulevard. What I read here is little Marina Boulevard has the parkway planting at, on the ground and there's trees on both big and little. What we don't see is the continuation of the landscape at ground level between those trees on the big part of Marina, big Marina Boulevard and that's.
That's right.
I want to be very clear, that's what we're talking about and we understand there's utilities, but it seems to me, as we've been talking, it's increased, it's, it's continuing that planting strip that's already underneath each tree.
That's definitely an opportunity we can look to, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, just want to be really clear about that, thank you, okay.
Okay, I don't see any other commissioners up for comment. I wanted to ask a question to the Commissioner Wayland regarding the additional comment to the council. I would ask, as I, as I heard that, I'm not, I'm, I guess my question should be, would you consider maybe including an action statement for the council of what they should do? And my specific observation is, we have a tendency to approve plans that are limiting rather than expansive. I mean, projects can always be made smaller, but they're really, really hard to make bigger. And so if there are opportunities through how the land use element and zoning is applied by the council in these plan updates, that we would, that would be what the council should be looking at. So I'm just throwing something out there to have an action.
I thought I did, let me read it to you again. This is the last sentence, "A key needed change is to the height limit, which needs to be reviewed and adjusted to permit appropriate density, including onsite affordable housing."
My observation of that is that that relates to this area and I think that if the statement is broadly about, to Commissioner Granowitz's point, that we all need to share, it doesn't mean everybody gets an equal amount, it's whatever a community can take as their fair share, but I was reflecting on Commissioner Granowitz's.
An additional sentence on the end?
So if I could jump in here, the project in front of you is this particular project, I would caution the commission from going too far into other territories that are not in front of them today.
Can we say something? All of us have talked about the concern that this is precedent-setting in a bad way and that would be a project.
As it relates to this project, yes.
And then can we also say to Chairman Haas's point, we'll be looking in the future and leave it vague, we don't have to call out what the plans are, but let's be frank, we're talking about a specific plan and a community plan that are coming forward. That, we don't want to see more of this in those updates and plans and I think we're trying to ride that, that fine line.
Yes, the, the concern is when you start talking about action items in the future that are not related to this particular project, I would just ask you to relate it to this particular project, the, the issue that you see with this particular project and the, you know, restrictions placed on it by the height limit and what you would like to see in the future with respect to that.
I, I believe that Commissioner Wayland's wording will get the message to them.
Okay, I'll give it to staff, I wrote it down.
Okay, I, I certainly respect the, the unique nature of communities and each community should have input into what their community vision should be for the future. I, I will say, from sitting in this chair now over seven years, I'm getting a little disappointed that our vision isn't as grand as I thought it could be when the strategic framework and the general plan was brought forward. I think we had a, an idea of what we wanted and we've sometimes go back to our old methods and behaviors. I would like staff to bring back an analysis or just a, a report to present to us, it doesn't have to be on the commission agenda, but I'm, I'm now curious as to what we have accomplished here over the last five or six years, you're frowning. Not yet, I've only got four more months. I'd like to know how we've done, how we've done with our community plan updates, how we've done to increase the potential for housing and the practical implementation of those, of those plans. I recall in Ocean Beach, and I'm not picking on Ocean Beach because it's not a community that really has a lot of potential, but I think we increased the, the holding capacity by 120-something units, but reality was only about 50 of those could be built over the life of that plan. That's not going to solve our problem, but Ocean Beach is a very unique place, so that one wasn't one to, to bust a pick over. But I would be interested in, in seeing just how we are doing.
We'd be happy to present that.
I'd like to avoid this in the future, I don't know how we do that. But we'll, maybe we'll figure that out here in the upcoming months and some of the discussions we have on our specific plans and, and community plan updates. If we're ready, we can vote. That is approved 6-0 with Commissioner Austin absent.